All right, ladies and gentlemen, if I can have your attention, we'll call this Thank You Long Star High School Board trustees together and we'll ask you to stand. And Mr. Ross is going to do our prayers in the main standing for us.
Hello, Beth. This is Father just come thank you for our life, our health and strength. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to be here at school board. I wish you the best for ones that are here, best administrators, board, teachers, the staff, the students of Dangerfield Long Star in the school district. Oh, we ask you to bless our actions tonight. Bless it all be pleasing to you. Bless us new things that be pleasing enough to your holy name. And oh, just come thank you, Father, special gift that you have given us. But realize that all good and great gifts come from you. And we just take this time to thank you, Father. Bless you be with us and watch us and God send a wind to help us to go. These are all blessed, we asking the son of these men, we pray and ask it of them.
Amen. Amen. Praise the heavens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going through the boards.
Yes, we have a guest here tonight, it's Sarah LaCosta, and she's with Mission Hospital Coalition at Next Step Community Solutions and Martha Baker is with her. We know that Martha is one of our retirees. I guess you could call her that.
Yeah, and Paige is with us.
And she's also our CHAC coordinator. So Erin, would you like to tell us about the board?
Yes.
Sure. Right up there.
Are you going to buy it?
I promise I won't. I'm not going to. I'm not going to exactly.
I want to thank you all for this opportunity to address you as community leaders. My name is Erin LaCosta. I'm Coalition Coordinator for Mission Hospital Coalition. We are gathering of concerned citizens, parents and grandparents, school faculty and staff, law enforcement, healthcare providers and others, working to prevent underage drinking and marijuana use and prescription drug abuse among our youth. We're funded by the state of Texas to empower our target communities, Dangerfield and Morris County being one of them, to address these issues from within. The Coalition works with citizens to raise awareness of the dangers facing our youth with alcohol and other drugs, inform them about the impact of youth substance has on the entire community, most importantly, work to empower community members like yourselves to make changes at ground level that create a community in which our youth and the whole community not only survive but thrive. The problems of underage drinking and other substance use are not unique to Dangerfield or your school district. However, we conducted community needs assessments in Bulleye, Cass, Franklin, Morris and Titus Counties. We found several risk factors identified as common contributing factors to youth substance abuse. Morris County has a population of 12,821 people. Twenty-three percent of them are under the age of 18. Almost 20% of Morris County residents live under poverty level. Eighty percent of residents over age 25 have a high school diploma or GED, and only 26% have a bachelor's degree, and 10% are single parent homes with minors. In addition, we have learned through our work over the past year that there are several CPX cases that we see throughout the county, which is another risk factor indicator for substance abuse. In addition to the census and state level research, we have spoken informally with students to gauge perception of substance abuse dangers. Most teens have an extremely low perception of harm related to alcohol and marijuana. They do recognize, however, that prescription drug abuse is dangerous. Teens also indicated that alcohol plays a major role in their social gatherings and it is very easy to access. Another risk factor that has recently emerged is the expansion of retail alcohol availability throughout Morris County. While most teens deny purchasing their alcohol themselves, in limited retail outlet compliance surveys shows that many outlets do not sell to minors, teens still indicate alcohol is extremely easy to get. More retail availability often equals more social access to alcohol. The information we gathered led the Coalition to consider efforts to address the issue of social access to alcohol. We determined that individuals, parents, grandparents, church leaders, business leaders and community leaders pledging to not provide alcohol to minors in their own homes or on their property would send a powerful message to our youth about the dangers of alcohol and about the kind of community and future we want for them. The Coalition launched this campaign, Not in My House, in January of this year. We distributed a community survey, which you have in your packet, to gauge community opinion on the issue of underage drinking. To date, we've received approximately 150 surveys from the community, about 70 of them being completed by high school students. Nearly 70% of respondents have lived in Dangerfield or Morris County for more than 10 years, suggesting they have a vested interest in making the community the best it can be. Would ask to rate their level of concern related to underage drinking, marijuana use and prescription drug abuse among you. Well over 80% indicated they were concerned. When the casual respondents perceived that both alcohol and drugs are easy for teens to find or get. In addition, 21% of respondents thought their friends and neighbors provided alcohol to teens. These survey results reinforce the Coalition's theory that in Morris County, we face an underage drinking challenge due to social access. The good news is that the answer to this challenge is in our own hands. After completing the survey, the Coalition offers adult respondents to the opportunity to sign the Not in My House pledge, a copy of which you also have. To date, 36 Morris County residents have signed this pledge, including Mr. Larson, which we very much appreciate, and some have even placed their signs in their yards. Each of the place signers will write an email address and receive monthly newsletters with information about the negative effects of alcohol on the teen brain, how and when to talk to children about alcohol, how to network with other adults throughout the community to prevent underage drinking. What the Coalition is here to accomplish tonight is to obtain the board's support for this effort in particular, also to join the Coalition to effect environmental change in Morris County for the benefit of our youth and ultimately the entire community. We would appreciate each of you completing the anonymous survey before you, signing the pledge, fully participating in the effort by using your position as community leaders to influence others to join our efforts. Moving forward, the Coalition needs the school system's support. Specifically, we are in need of ground level data about the community's perceptions related to alcohol and other drugs. We based our second year efforts on national and state level data about youth substance use trends and interpretations of risk factors associated with substance abuse that I mentioned earlier. While this information can be helpful in overarching efforts, local data is vital to tailoring our efforts to a particular population, for example, Dangerfield Low Star High School, correctly messaging our efforts and most importantly, establishing true environmental change that benefits this community. We have before you both the pledge and survey, and we also have included in the packet, a sample student survey that we would like to conduct amongst students in Dangerfield Low Star ISD. Please know that we are sensitive to any hesitation you may have regarding publicity of this information. Publicity is not our intent. Rather, we want and need this data to create and implement effective strategies that will improve student educational experience, improve the overall school environment and ultimately improve the community environment in which we all live and work. The Coalition is working to make communities better, but we cannot do it alone. Each and every citizen needs to contribute to this community-wide effort because we truly believe that only together can we make it possible. I thank you for your time and would like to enter any questions that you may have.
How have you, what kind of survey did y'all do? I mean, how did you go about?
We created an online survey where people received a link via email. We had Ms. Corlitz arrange for each of the schools to send it out to parents that had the link in there. A few responded that way. We have distributed the, a hard copy of the survey to students and various community organizations like the Chamber of Commerce in any opportunity to get to speak with individuals.
Is your primary response to date adults or our target age?
It's primarily adults. However, there were about 70 students. When I went in late January, I did presentations in L class at the high school during National Drug Facts to educate students about the impact of alcohol and drugs on their brains because they're developed differently. And at that time, we were allowed to offer them the survey after them, but it was purely voluntary. They wanted to participate.
This, or 70, about four of that school?
How did the high school students, did they have a lot of questions about what you?
They always have a lot of questions, which is wonderful. I love that they have questions. When they tell me that they've heard of triple C or they know that cocaine that has a certain effect, I get very nervous. Or when they don't ask questions, that tells me two things. One, they know it already, or two, they think they know it and it's probably wrong. But for the most part, as I said at the very beginning, they have a very low perception of harm related to alcohol. They don't understand why the drinking age is 21. They believe that it's an effort to keep them from having fun. If they can vote and they can join the military, why can I not have a drink? And that is the perception that we're trying to change. Because it's on several adults, believe, why not you, you've worked all day, it's a rite of passage here, pop a beer with grandfather or your father. It is a big deal. It has a tremendous devastating impact on our youth. And particularly with all the debate going around about deregulating and de-criminalizing marijuana with very low perceptions of harm, we could be in for a very long road, particularly in the area of school, because when they're getting into substance abuse, you're going to have more truancy, less compliance with the school system, less performance, lower performance, higher dropout rates, which means less money for the school, and it just snowballs from there. And then if our schools are hurting, the whole community is going to suffer. So this is one of the reasons why we came to you all, as community leaders, to help us with this effort and make Dangerfield and Morris County all the candy.
What data did you use to select which counties you're going to be covering?
We did population data primarily, and it was national CDC information as well as information generated by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. And they use, the CDC does the Youth Risk Behavior Survey where they survey various populations that are sampling across the country about 30-day use, past year use with youth. And it's everything from alcohol and other drugs, tobacco, to their sexual activity, to driving risky, not wearing seatbelts, all kinds of questions that inform a wide variety of issues. And then we looked at, from the state level, they asked us to look at what are typically considered risk factors, those things like living below the poverty level, high numbers of that, high numbers of lit clients, high numbers of protective services calls, high numbers of violent crimes, because those are all indicative of a drug and alcohol problem. And it's difficult, as I said, to get ground level data that's up to date, because typically the law enforcement information is two years old at best. But you need that kind of time to filter through all the things. One of the things that we do look at is national highway traffic information. And they have seen, because Texas is one of the few states that not only does alcohol, but also tox screens when there's a fatality involved. In half of all of the vehicular fatalities that occurred where someone under the age of 25 was involved, over half of those were both alcohol and marijuana involved. That's concerning. In that age group, we're already at risk for erratic driving, not paying attention, they're distractible, and then we're adding substances to it.
I wanted to contribute something, actually, there's a 13-county area.
Correct.
And this same thing is being duplicated in the Longview area. But I think Dangerfield always leads the way on things. And I think what we're trying to accomplish here will speak well when they try to do the same thing in Mount Pleasant and in Cass County. And I'm most excited about the fact there's a Facebook page.
Yes.
Because our young parents, that we send all these home and, oh, I didn't look in the book bag, or I didn't check the report card, or whatever, if we can ever get them hooked in to this Facebook where they can see the dangers of what their children are doing, and the teenagers, they're on their phones more than anything, if we can get that information that will pop up on something they're going to see all the time, I think we can make an incredible difference in how they view it. It's not just about, you know, telling the parents, don't have alcohol if you're half, but setting a thing to where the parents would say, okay, I also know that this parent down the street has said, I'm not going to have alcohol, so if your child comes here, I'm going to follow what the law says, and they will not be served alcohol, and I won't sponsor party. One of the big things that they're dealing with is pastor parties.
Yes.
And y'all have heard what has happened in those cases. And I just think it's going to give more information to parents about, you know, that's illegal for you to host a party, and I know it's hard to get to, but anyway, you'll hear this same stuff, it'll have a different name in the Longview Kilgore area, so it's a pretty widespread coalition.
We do. Our sister agency, Next Step Community Solutions, we also provide substance abuse mental health counseling in schools. I know that my boss has spoken with you all, and you all have wonderful counselors that help out. Our children are facing a lot of stressors these days. So many of them are in single parent homes, and that's a stressor on our children. And the more, I can't change the fact that families are breaking up, or change the poverty level or the number of people, but I can put risk factors or protective factors in place to help offset some of those risk factors. And that's really what we're asking you to help us do right now. The sample survey that we put in there is going out, my colleague who works in Harrison, Gray and Marion County, they are surveying the middle school there. We'd like to do a similar survey, and that information can be very helpful to you all as well, for writing for additional grants, for programming, et cetera. And if we want to take out questions, add in questions, if there's something you want to know, if there's a bullying issue, if there's a housing issue amongst our youth, we can always work on that, but we want it to be a tool that all of us can be used to better program for our kids. I almost forgot, at the very back is a fact sheet, and I have some more copies. These are the sorts of things that we take around to both parents and children, and it's, this one is particularly about how alcohol affects the teen brain. Whereas the brain develops from the back of the head to the front, alcohol and other substances affecting from the front, the most fragile, to the back. In most cases, teens, when they do drink, they binge drink, so you're affecting all the way back to, at the very least, their long-term memory centers. So they're not getting what happened in science class, they're not carrying that over to Monday morning if they're drinking. And hopefully, they're not drinking so much that they're losing their ability to breathe and walk and talk and those sorts of things, but unfortunately, that is often the result. That was for you, science teacher.
Yes.
Erin, would you like to tell the board about your monthly meetings?
Yes. Our Coalition meets once a month in our, typically here in Dangerfield, although I do serve five counties, but we meet on the first Wednesday of every month at noon. To date, we've been meeting at Church on the Rock, and always open to other locations that may be more convenient to people. I know that it's difficult to get away. I just feel like this is such an important issue that affects all of us. I would welcome anyone who wishes to attend and, like I said, join the effort. And our next one is April 1st.
Any other board?
Okay, we're Church on the Rock here in Dangerfield. Yes, sir.
Mary Sag Lunch, or?
Yes, please. We are not, that is not an allowable expense for the Coalition to stay. I'm not going to let this happen, even if I bought it myself. Because it's construed as using state money.
The board may not have time to fill these out, probably because they've got other things to attend to, but if you'll leave them and if Ms. Corlitz will let me know, I'll send it in.
Thank you all so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for this good information. Thank you, Erin. Page number five, Consider Financial Reports of 2015.
Hey, you know, Lisa's not here tonight, so I was kind of walking through this weekend. And on the first page, you have the income expenditure report. On page two, you have financial statement that you prepare each month. You can see on that that we have collected about 88.72% of the tax revenue that we expect to collect. This time last year, we hit collect, collected 80%, so we're doing well on that. Down at the bottom, you can see that this time, this year compared to this time last year, we have about $200,000 less in expenditures. So we're doing well there. Okay, and then on page, page is three. Seven, you have an estimated realized revenue comparison summary. All we had estimated and then what has actually been realized up until this date. Page eight, you have the disbursements, rated in $10,000. That sack of one charge electric for the $14,120.2 cents, as the expense that we discussed several times, the lights down, place off field, so that's taken care of.
And that includes some on the football field.
Two were, had to be adjusted, because that's that storm. And then the check register, starting on page nine. For nineteen, if you have a question about one of them, we're trying to answer it, or we'll get the information and then we'll act with you.
Corlitz, page ten, up to the top, similar to point three, over here, that's our main account.
Which one do you have?
Uh, page ten, by the secretary.
Baby, yes. Same time you put it right.
And we have something close to that, like Tractor, too?
We have Tractor, maybe ABC, and maybe a round, we just don't have one of the rounds on some of your, like, or. Hello, we have babies, Tractor and ABC. I know we do. We're trying to watch that and compare to what we spent at Kimster. We did go back and compare what we spent up to this point to what we spent at this point last year. It's pretty close to the same, but we are looking for ways that we can reset it. On page fifteen, that Johnson and Pice, that was our survey. It was surrounding cell process, and halfway down the page.
That's including our total cost? Are we talking everything?
Probably, that's the only survey.
No, I, you should kind of deal with all that cost.
That was a part that probably never seemed to be given enough, yes.
You got a good looking sheet next, right?
So this one, it's like long enough.
Yeah, the actual, the picture works. Anybody got any more questions on finance, materials?
On point one, you have it, it was by the house. Point two, that's exterior service, and that's just more than any question you have about that. So we have a balance there, that is with serving all the students for breakfast. You know, they're all, they can all get free breakfast, anyone wants it now. And then on point three, that's our investment, hopefully investment report. And it's not any better than it has been. The interest is just low, low, low. It's about the best way you can do with it right now.
Okay, no more questions for you, ma'am, you need a motion. I made the motion, you accept it, I am for it. Just start with later. Motion, you need a second. Mr. Kiper made a second, all in favor, raise your hand in. All hands, raise, motion carries. All right, text items, consent items, number six. Minutes. Make motion, we approve the motion. Okay, it's time to make a motion. Yes, sir. Mr. Rong made a second, all in favor, raise your hand in. All hands, raise, motion carries. Okay, just ready for the board.
Okay, I said, your place, I gave you a list of dates. Has a red and a black crown. I think it's at the very bottom, I might have heard that. On April the ninth, Thursday, that's the Northeast Texas School Board Association's Spring Meeting and Training at six o'clock. The bill is at five thirty. And we'll have a meeting with Lep here from Advent at five ten, if you want, anybody wants to ride together. And I would imagine if Rhonda needs to know pretty soon, who would like to go to that?
Who would read that?
I probably would, yourself.
Yeah, right. Our April and that is on the thirtieth.
Uh huh. It's got halfway down, you see it?
I see it, it does start by.
Yeah, oh, okay. So that's for you. Okay.
And that's going to reach the eighth.
Yes, it is, uh huh. So anybody that wants to ride together will be here at five ten. Okay, then, this is also, this is separate, also, Rhonda, I think it is, I mean, this report from Callis. It's just another date, um, like, made up there. As, if you've driven by there and looked, you know, that they've removed the fencing. They've taken up all of that track, it's out there from top of the hill. They are, they have put in part of the tree, grain around the track. They are still in the process of taking out the old clay pipe. I believe that's what they said was a problem with the track failing. Is because that track, that pipe had just started to deteriorate and break down. And he has, if you look down from the bottom for inclement weather, he said he did, he said ten days it was below freezing and eight days it were rain days. I really thought it was like forty days and forty nine, but he said on the eighth, so maybe he's wrong. Anytime that you're, that you drive by here, you probably notice, they work a lot of times in the rain. And I think they probably work on those freezing days as well, and they work on the weekends. They like to work. I have to be at Hawkins one day, when they came in, they also liked to eat, I guess they worked on appetite. I talked to Brian, Judd, he's the site supervisor this morning. And he said that Richard will be here Wednesday afternoon. He's going to go out and look at things to see if it meets with what he thinks is supposed to be taking place out there. And he invited any of you that would like to meet out there with him to do so. Well, he's not sure what time, that's a tentative date, Wednesday, he said Wednesday afternoon. But you'll call up here Wednesday morning, I think we should, if the forecast is good, come this week. Of course, I think it's supposed to rain Wednesday, so.
That's right, it'll be, it'll be real good.
Right.
Can you call, can someone call and tell us what he's going to do here?
Sure.
Okay.
Texas.
Oh, well, and just let me know that you're here, if you've been out, we'll try to call.
Where was that subterranean clay pipe, Corl? Was that water drain?
Yeah, I think it was under the track, is that not right?
Going through the corners over there.
We've got one north, and up there two of them on the side.
This quarter.
Ah, up down the south.
That's where they always, you know. Well, they, they put them down here, by the, that's true.
South, southwest corner.
Southwest corner.
Yeah. Are we in the track? Well, that hole, yeah, wall in the, what did they find there?
They haven't, they haven't done that up yet. They've just taken the tracks, the rubber, I wouldn't call it rubber, off the top of the, they took the top off and.
On this, on this, in your southwest corner?
Yeah.
Oh, you had to keep filling that up.
Getting the track, that's, yeah. They haven't done anything to it, that's it.
I know, but what, do we know what they found there?
They haven't excavated it yet.
They have not excavated it yet. What they have found in it is the pipe is stocked up on the northwest side with dirt, trash, and everything. And it's, you're rolling around in clay pipe pigs and letting it run down the side and eat the track and let the tracks sink. They're digging the center of the track out, crushing all of it, putting it back in.
Ms. Corl, do we have, do we have a print of plumbing and what all over there on the football field?
What was there? The best we could find was something that, I think my staff had actually drawn it off on a piece of onion skin. And it's, it's not in real good shape. But I took that to the surveyor and he made a copy of it, so we could work with that copy. And it had some notations and grains and things on it. It wasn't in real detail, I don't think.
Well, the reason I asked this question, you know, is we.
We need one.
Like new line.
Right, yeah, we have one now.
Who's in charge of making the new one? And just make sure we have one frame.
Well, of course, Richard, Wednesday, I don't think so.
That should be part of the project.
Yeah, that's it. They should be invited, once they get all that in, they should be able to buy all of them.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's their, their part, though. What we're having to ourselves, we need to be monitoring.
Yes.
Yes. So that really should be the.
And they're putting in some, we need to.
And how would you not want to?
Instead of drawing funny doodles, we need to.
You might want to tell them how the track, boys and girls were cracking some.
We have, we have spoken with Ours City, and right now, we're, you know, we're able to go over there and practice at Ours City. They, they've done a really good job allowing us to use their track. And we were looking at sending them, I just will thank you, know the better, and let the kids sign it because we, we realize that what we're doing here is, is, is good for us, but, but for them allows to go over there. Sometimes, some coaches and athletic regents will hesitate to do that. But their, their athletic regents are really good guys, and we really appreciate them a lot. Our girls and boys are going over there pretty much every day unless we get some bad weather. They, I think, they have a middle school track meet, so, so we weren't able to move there. And then our junior high, we have, I'm visiting with Pittsburgh, and we have that, that available to us as well. If we need to go over there.
Well, did, did the, have an ability to go to Ours City and practice, is that what made our girls do so great? They'll look at that, Coach.
Well, I, I've only seen two of the practices since, since, since we've been doing, coming basketball. And those girls are going to be really special. I don't know if it's going to Ours City or what the case may be, but, but they, they have some tremendous, really young girls that are going to be pretty good.
And they're freshmen?
Freshmen, there's, there's a few freshmen that are in there that are really going well and give a, you know. There's some seniors in there as well, but those freshmen are going to be pretty good. We, as I say, we had Shablee, that went off to Corpus Christi this past weekend and competed in the public meet. She came up a little short from first place, but she's going to be someone that's going to contribute on that track any way.
So, you know, we'll all be able to do when we have a track here.
Right, well, well, and, and, you know, once we get there, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure that this, this track is supposed to be a fast track. So hopefully, you know, hopefully we'll be able to build from there.
So, I could frames that are only six miles away, that was not possible.
Well, we didn't, we didn't, well, we didn't, we didn't get into asking them, and we felt like it probably would be something that, we're just going to ask them, so. But, but we, we felt comfortable with the ones that we asked, and it wasn't nobody else who was going to ask.
Okay, the board, do you have any more administrative boards?
That's all.
All right. We'll move on to number eight, action items. Consider approval of instructional materials allotment and tech certification 2015-16.
That's mine.
Is that one?
That's me, that's me. Every year, we have to certify the aspect that the materials that I am buying through. Instructional materials allotment money is 100% the teeks, cover 100% of the teeks, the material bills. And we have to sign, this, this board has already signed it off. I think the next page shows you what she's signed off on, and we have to submit it to aspect.
All right, boy, you got any questions for us? Campbell? I know she doesn't ask a doubt. I made a motion, we approve that. Okay, Mr. Kiper made a motion, do you second?
Second.
This board adds a second, all in favor, raise your hand in. All hands, raise, motion carries. All right. Next item is number eight, two, consider approval of mid-school day waiting. We'll give this a couple of days.
Three, we'll miss three and then two like starts.
I'll make a review motion if you approve the rest day.
I'll, I'll second it, but I'll ask a question. We're going to make that two to three days, does that count as like an absent for us thing, that one day?
It just doesn't count. We had two, so they put on them, and then first and second, so we have to go up to us two days.
Motion made by Ms. Barzal and Ms. Kiper, all in favor, raise your hand in. All hands, raise, motion carries. Eight, three, consider rescinding resolution regarding the school resource officer grant for 2015-16. A document on February the twenty-sixth, took that out of the 15.
That's mine as well.
Ms. Campbell, you.
The, the grant manager has sent me an email and asked me to change our resolution from the 100% of the project being funded to leaving it out completely. Because he said right now, they don't know how much money that will, they will be given from the federal government to fund these grants. So he said that if they had an amount, oh, $60,000, then we had two people apply for the grant, they might want to offer us half and someone else half. So it would already be in the resolution that it was not being funded 100%.
Refer Ms. Campbell's explanation to the questions. All right, I need a motion, I'll accept a motion. Mr. Allen, you made a motion, need a second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Allen with a second, all in favor, raise your hand in. All hands, raise, motion carries. Okay, eight, four. Consider document of revised resolution regarding the school resource officer grant for 2015-16.
That's the new resolution, without the 100%.
All right. Okay, eight, five, one, everybody's seen it. Any comments, questions? Not a need a motion.
Hang on, just want everybody on the, yeah.
CJ, I think you've ready to meet. If I go into our own place tomorrow, we, we would probably be better than getting funds, if they're right, for, for.
So you have what funds?
Bus grants.
They, at the grant team, the school resource officer grant funds for last year, they only fund, how many did they fund? Two, one department?
None.
Let it get any of that?
No, we're the lady that worked for AdCon.
Oh, AdCon, all of that, that's, so, school resource officers need to do that. What did they get, was it for training or?
AdCon, for, for training, and I believe they were, it was more for their training and also for, to facilitate counseling. The majority of theirs was for counseling. That's what, that's what their pitch was to work it out.
Paragraph three, where it talks about jurisdiction.
Does it make sense for us if you came up?
Yeah, paragraph three, it says, the board desires to employ peace officer with.
Oh, wait, 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 okay, which one are you going to? Eight, nine, two.
On the resolution, I'm sorry, on the resolution.
Okay.
In this paragraph three. And where it talks about jurisdiction over all territory. And I understand, you've got that word that just, you know, verb based like it is in the code, so.
Uh huh.
But. What's CJ's jurisdiction going to be?
Schools is what I was going to.
Just.
Well, we would, Sandra, it's going to be the schools and the athletic commands.
I would think so, but that's part of them.
Property.
Property.
How does that read to you? How does that read you, and it says, with jurisdiction over all territory? In the, in the boundaries of the district?
Okay, on, on that right there, the jurisdiction is, it's amazing, it would be more as counter. Because if we have to do home visits and take, and take, you know, say we have to take a student into custody for, I mean, for any reason, for where we can go out into the county and do our home visits and street, student and parents.
It says, all territories within the district. So does that read to you, all the Lone Star, all the city, Dangerfield, all the area? All Long Star, all City-Datesfield, all the areas that the school.
To the school district.
Services.
Services.
Services. Now, if you want to change the. However, you want.
Want to reword it?
Well, some people may live outside our school district too.
Because right now, we, we've actually been in, we've actually went to Titus County. I went out there to Titus County off of the College Road where we had some questions on where a student lived. Went out on 49 to, to a trailer, a little trailer house community. That was last year where we had questions on students, where he was living.
If you have to make an arrest out there or do something, do you have the backing of a judicial system? As far as having to make an arrest or do something outside of Dania Field, I guess you'd say.
Uh, now, if we had to be in Morris County?
So you have to go into Titus County for the school district?
Uh, I talked to Ronnie Humphrey and he said that, and that, that's where, that's who helped me on this. That's where I got a lot of my information from. And if you have to go into another county and make the arrests, usually we can, I guess we would have to do a res, uh, a MOU, remember in Long Star with possibly that county? But I know I talked to, I talked to the city of Mount Pleasant. Now, that was just the MOU for the use of possibly their K-dogger to, to come run them at the school. It's universal. You would, you don't see a problem with that.
So do you think it should be added, any boundary that, uh, Dania Field, Long Star, student?
I don't know. I just, you know, couldn't understand. The way that reads to me is that if the board adopts a resolution and then we drop down and read one, two. Sorry, paragraph four. You know, where it talks about powers and duties, which are the, you know, powers and duties of a peace officer? When I read, when I read those together, it reads to me that you have all the rest powers and duties within the territories that the district encompasses. We need to reword that. At all? Not at all. Okay. I'm, I'm not, I'm just, just for clarification, is that, is that the way you understand? That if you were just, you know, if you were traveling down the highway here between Long Star and Daysfield and you thought what you thought was a drunk driver, you would have the, you would have the power to stop that car? Is that the way you read that?
So he can multitask. While he's on the car, he can multitask.
And, and there's a paragraph that you could have put in there, but it's not in there where it talks about, contracting with a political subdivision for, for your jurisdiction to include all the territory, like in the city here. Did you want to put that in? Well, we've got, if we can, we have, I want to say you have to, not just.
What's it called?
Do you want to add to the resolution?
Yeah, we can. I'll just type it in there and then I'll add it and we may submit it?
You need to.
You all have time, Ron. You all need to have it in and figure it out.
Good to have it in there.
Uh, no, we just cannot make with the, uh, what's the agent's name?
We can't make with, I didn't. Submit anything until after we have.
Just, we suppose, but we can do it in April. Where to go?
Are we okay?
Uh huh, yeah.
Well, I could, because I'm at the motion. Would that reach until the resolution?
I'm okay with that.
Resolution with that mean the resolution too?
What about this?
So what are you going to?
We, we make a motion to adopt that resolution.
And then.
As a minute.
And if we add with that language.
Okay, I can do that. That's fine.
Yeah, I mean that for, for back there because I can't read it all. Oh, you didn't.
Oh, here's the back, okay.
Just for a second.
Okay.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the formation of the Daysfield-Long Star IAS School Police Department with one amendment to the, uh, to the resolution to add that a school district peace officer may provide assistance to another law enforcement agency. A school district may contract with a political subdivision for the jurisdiction of the school district. Peace officers include all territory in the jurisdiction of political subdivisions.
Maybe I'll, you'll just, you'll make an annotation on that so that I.
We serve the.
Okay, good.
I'll give you a remark.
Ms. Barlow has made a motion.
I'll second that.
Ms. Kim was already seconded.
Who's second?
Ms. Kim. All in favor, raise your right hand. All hands ready, motion carries.
We need the back track to five fours. Oh, sorry, eight four.
Yes.
You always send that resolution which means to adopt the revised resolution on that, oh.
Put two of them on eight four.
Right.
Make a motion about, act out eight four.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chandler made a motion, Chandler made a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All hands ready, motion carries. Eight, six. Consider adoption of order of cancellation districts three and five trustee of election.
And we have two candidates on the House, so we need to cancel the other option. Can we vote on that? I'll pick something.
Yeah.
We just can't win the election.
Can't win.
All right, make a motion on that. Eight, six.
I'll make a motion to approve the item eight six. I'll say that. All right.
Larson made a motion. Down here in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. That's yours. All hands ready, motion carries. All right, eight, seven, considering approved terms of maintenance tax note.
Okay, on eight, seven, one, and also eight, seven, two, uh, this is the information from Government Capital which spells out the three options for the note. You can see there that option one has a slightly lower interest rate, 2.78, with three annual payments and the payments are $320,117.91. Option two has a little bit higher interest rate, 2.98%. It has five yearly payments, each of $198,414.41. And option three has the greatest interest rate, 3.18%. It would be paid out over seven years. It'd be seven payments and those payments are less. They're $146,902.24. And in that second paragraph, Lisa has told you exactly how much, uh, each of those would be in end, how much you would end paying, end up paying back. Our recommendation is option two, which would be the five payments of $198,414.41 at 2.98%. And, uh, our plan is actually to pay it back early, not to take the five years. But we feel like that's safer than, uh, going for three. We feel like seven is too long to drag it out. So we say five and try to pay it off early.
Okay, what is, what's dealing on the interest? Are we locked in with the interest? Or if I pay it off early, do I save some money?
You would save, you, yes, you would save if you pay it off early, yes.
Okay, so it's going to be on current balance. It's not going to be on.
Right, right.
Preloaded, preloaded interest?
Right, exactly. So I'm going to think pay it off early.
All right. But it would be a 2.98?
Right.
We'll make the motion that we go with option two.
Ms. Barlow made a motion. I second. All in favor, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All hands ready, motion carries. Eight, eight. Consider approval of budget amendments.
Right, on eight, eight, one. Um, and eight, eight, two, that's the, um, budget amendment to transfer to $500,000 and we'll pay it down on it. And if you'll remember, I think we had $350,000, um, it was already in a designated O-balance for some type of, um, capital improvement. So, uh, hopefully at the end of this year, we'll be able to put maybe $150,000 with that that we don't actually have to take out of the O-balance. But if we have to, that's what we would do. Uh, the other budget amendment is, uh, the, we didn't spend all the money that we set aside for the ag truck. And so, uh, we want to move that over to vocational, we want to take it from vocational vehicles and put it in vocational supplies, uh, and that's archery supplies that Mark Schu will use in his outdoor class.
Per Ms. Corr's declaration of a right amendment.
Archery, yes, archery.
You can take $1,300,000, give me a speed.
Just in case we take all our bullets away, we could still go after it.
Okay, just that one, ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Larson, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All hands ready, motion carries. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you'll excuse us.
Three teachers in there.
Resignation?
Resignation of, uh, three teachers, as recommended by the administration.
All right, Mr. Chandler made a motion on retirement. Do you second?
Second.
Mr. Ronnie, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All hands ready, motion carries.
Okay, it's one, two, uh, nine, four, you know, right? I make a recommendation that we hire the, uh, high school principal, recommend anybody in administration.
Mr. Ray Carroll.
Mr. Ray Carroll.
Ryan Carroll. Ryan Carroll, excuse me. You'll answer to Ray, don't you?
Mine won.
Right now, I will.
All right.
And I will second that.
All right, Mr. Chandler made a motion on high school principal and Ms. Barlow seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, all hands ready, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Carroll.
We're going to be good. Good. Thank you.
Put it never through. Okay.
No evidence.
And Ron has. Why?
Well, I just saw.
Just thought on the micro motion.
Thank you, thank you.
Give it a second.
Second.
Go in seconds, we can't vote over.
Anything else on the topic, Ms. Corr?
Uh, just let Ron know if you're going to be able to go to bed now and trying to get that one out.
What do you say, Ron? April the ninth?
I think it's.
It's Thursday.
Okay, read tonight.
You want that?
All right, I see everybody signed up. We're ready to make that last movement. Make a motion to the jury. Down for a move, second motion. Ms. Larson, second. In favor, stink.